Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stone if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Father, as we continue to look at your business for your city, give us wisdom today. Give the speakers clarity as they present their plans for next year. Give us attentive ears that we might listen and ask pertinent questions and make wise decisions as we move forward. Thank you for where you continue to bless us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the meeting to order and then recess the council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee.
Mayor, this is our fourth time to look at the budget this year. It'll be five times all told. We introduced the budget one week. Another week, we had a Finance Committee meeting with three departments. We had another Finance Committee with three departments. Today was our fourth time on it with another Finance Committee meeting with three departments, and then we're looking to adopt the budget at the council meeting next week. Today, we have the Utilities Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Airports Department. And leading off is Chris Browning in the Utilities Department. So, and this is Chris's first budget presentation, so we need to be nice soon this morning.
To align with city council priorities, the Utility Department developed core business initiatives, and every item in the proposed FY 2018 budget is tied to either one or more of those initiatives. First of all, it's customer service. As a regional utility, we provide water, wastewater, and solid waste services to customers throughout the metro area. Safety. We're responsible for providing a safe work environment for employees and the public. Water supply. As a regional water provider, it is critical that we continue to secure and effectively manage long-term water supply for central Oklahoma. System reliability and resiliency. To minimize the likelihood of system failure, we are installing redundancies and upgrading our aging infrastructure. Financial management. Sound financial management practices enable us to preserve our exceptional bond rating. Our AAA stable rating was reaffirmed last October. And then finally, regulatory compliance. We're committed to full compliance with regulatory requirements. As regulations evolve, we will present recommendations based upon sound, scientific, and fiduciary practices. The Aquit No-SEAT Fund resources are currently forecasted to exceed $494 million in FY '18. As you can see from the chart, approximately 60 percent of our funds come from water, wastewater, and solid waste service charges. This chart identifies the proposed fund's usage for FY '18. City utility operations is projected at $98.3 million, capital improvements at $271 million, and service contracts at $48 million, where we have Aquit Service Contract with Severn Trent for wastewater operations, $16.3 million, and OSEAT Service Contracts totaling $31.7 million for fleet maintenance, waste management, and landfill disposal. The Utilities Department proposed budget begins on page C170. Our proposed operating budget for FY '18 totals just over $104 million, which is about a 2.9 percent increase over last year's budget and includes 13 additional positions. As noted in the previous slide, we anticipate expending approximately $98 million. The difference between the $98 and the $104 million includes reserve funds pursuant to city policy, and those are generally used in the event that we have to produce more water, so it would be for operating and for energy costs. So the significance of this slide is to demonstrate how the addition of employees is not kept up with the magnitude of growth of our infrastructure or customer base. Therefore, in order to continue to meet customer expectations, we need to restructure some of our business units, enhance technology so we can effectively collect and manage data, and we'll need to add staff in specific areas. So first of all, we'll talk about customer service. To serve our customers better, we have included several enhancements in this year's budget. We'd like to reorganize a couple of our work groups. We want to relocate the emergency call center to the Utilities Customer Service Division to improve call handling. The new customer service center is able to handle higher call volume, and they also have an auto messaging capability. So if we have an emergency like we had last fall when the 72-inch line at Draper failed, we can handle the call volume rather than having it overload our system and customers not really know what's going on because they can't get through. We would also like to reassign meter maintenance from customer service to line maintenance, and this is to improve efficiencies by having these two work units under the same division where they can share their resources. Next, we'd like to create a new fleet services division. The consolidated fleet operations will enable us to standardize and right-size the fleet throughout the department, administer all utility fueling needs, oversee employee training and certification requirements, develop and manage specialized equipment service contracts, and improve equipment utilization rates. We'd like to improve our solid waste cart delivery process as well. Our goal is to have the cars delivered, repaired, or replaced within three business days. Last year, we were not able to meet the goal, so we added two positions and overfilled status. This past year, we met the goal with those two extra positions, so we'd like to make them permanent in this year's budget. We'd like to upgrade our private development services. Our goal is to review development plans within 10 business days. As we review the plans, we also need to collect and manage development-related data so that we can establish proper city services billing accounts. To keep up with the demands of a growing community, we need to add two positions. Those will be engineering assistant positions. And then finally, we'd like to integrate our management systems. Currently, we have multiple applications for work management permitting, customer information, billing, and data storage, but none of them are integrated, so we're not able to share the relative data. To integrate and properly manage our system, we'll need to add two positions, two network administrators for that function. Safety. Our current incident rate is just over 10 incidents per 100 full-time employees per year. Our goal is to reduce that number to eight by 2020. In 2017, we hired a consultant to help develop a comprehensive plan to reduce that injury rate. So in Phase 1, in this year's budget, they standardized the incident evaluation process and trained our employees to properly and consistently perform those investigations. Phase 2 in the proposed FY '18 budget, we'd like them to identify and implement changes to fieldwork practices to reduce the potential for injuries. Because of the size and diversity of our organization, we need one additional safety professional to effectively administer the program. System reliability and resiliency. Currently, repair, we repair, replace, and maintain our infrastructure based upon failure rates. Under the proposed asset management program in FY '18 budget, we will assess the condition of our assets and develop maintenance, repair, and replacement programs based upon the current state and the remaining useful life of the asset. Asset management practices reduce service disruption by the development of effective operation and maintenance work plans, reduce capital costs by scheduling repair and maintenance before failure to minimize impacts on the community and on other infrastructure as well, minimize the impact on the community because work is planned and scheduled rather than reactive, and it allows us to prioritize our capital program based upon condition assessment data and the consequence of failure analysis. Proposed program is a multi-step process where we plan to start with our wastewater infrastructure and then develop a similar program for water either next year or the year after. To develop the wastewater program, we'll need to add one additional position in the Regulatory compliance. Oklahoma Underground Facilities Damage Prevention Act, or OKI 811, requires utilities to locate their infrastructure as requested to avoid damage during construction activities. Right now, we receive an average of about 150,000 locate requests annually. To meet the demand, we need to add one staff member to review the locate request and assign the work. So we get about 150,000 requests in, but we don't have to actually go out and locate all of our infrastructure. We normally locate about 50,000 to 60,000 because some of those requests, we don't have any assets in the area. So we need somebody to screen those requests and issue the work accordingly. Our wastewater treatment plant contract oversight, right now, we have four wastewater treatment plants and more than 100 land application sites. They're all operated by Severn Trent. Because of the geographical distance between the sites, we propose adding one employee to help monitor contract performance. Our commercial wastewater monitoring program. Within our wastewater permits issued by Oklahoma DEQ, we are required to issue permits and monitor industrial and commercial wastewater discharges entering our system. We have about 5,000 commercial sites in our service area, so we need one additional staff member to ensure compliance with our commercial pretreatment requirements. And then finally, grease and root control program. We're experiencing about 900 sewer blockages per year, and two out of three are related to either grease or roots. To reduce the likelihood of grease and root-related blockages, we need to increase our abatement effort by adding $850,000 to the program budget. Earlier, I indicated it's about a 2.9 percent increase of this year's budget versus last year. This $850,000 is a third of that budget increase. So to help us more effectively and more efficiently manage our core business processes and practices and to improve departmental performance, we propose creating partnerships with other city departments. Through collaboration, we will be able to better focus on our efforts, or better focus our efforts on our core business processes. So we developed an agreement with Parks and Rec to outsource our landscape maintenance. In addition, they'll help us with litter pickup, and they'll help us in the wintertime by removing ice. We're working with Public Works to outsource our road maintenance around our lake reservations. We propose to fund a position within the Personnel Department to help fill our vacant positions. And we propose funding four new positions within the IT Department to perform server maintenance and security to support the new utility SCADA system. So that would be our remote control systems in our pumping stations throughout our system. So that's the end of our proposed operating budget presentation. Because capital improvements make up a significant part of our ability to sustain reliable utility services for customers, I'd like to provide you with a few highlights of our proposed capital program for the upcoming year. Water supply is by far the largest component of the five-year capital plan. It totals almost 50 percent of the total capital budget. The second Atoka pipeline is planned to be completed by 2023. Pipeline is currently under design. Construction is anticipated to begin in FY 2019, and the anticipated cost is approximately $700 million. That's the first leg of our ability to move the water from the Lake Sardis in the Comichy Basin up to Oklahoma City. This pipeline will provide adequate capacity to move all the water from Atoka, McGee Creek, and Sardis up to Oklahoma City. Within the next 10 years, we'll need to build the second leg from Atoka down to the Comichy River to move the Sardis water up to Oklahoma City. Building this pipeline now will enable us to take the current line out of service and rehabilitate that line. So we'll end up with two pipelines, so we'll have redundancy throughout our raw water transportation system. In spring 2015, the Atoka spillway failed due to heavy rains. That's the picture you're looking at here. The spillway will be enhanced to handle the higher flows. We're currently under design with that project, and we believe it'll be completed by spring 2019. The cost to renovate that spillway is about $30 million. There's a 72-inch water main coming from the Draper Water Treatment Plant. We've experienced numerous system failures since 1989, including one last fall. The capital program proposes the replacement of the entire pipeline within the next five years. However, rather than replacing the entire line, we plan to reform condition assessment within the next year. Current technology will enable us to take the line out of service and actually find the weaknesses within that pipeline. So instead of replacing the whole thing, we can identify the weak points along the structure. That will enable us to create a plan for a specific line and valve repair or replacement to minimize the likelihood of future failure. The budget indicates the cost would be about $30 million, the current capital budget. But we believe we can probably cut that in half by doing the condition assessment and just replacing what we need to replace. Our neighborhood water and sewer mains in some areas have aged, so we propose to double our commitment for these projects from $5 million to $10 million over the next few years, including this budget year, so that we can replace those pipelines quicker. And then the Draper and Hefner potable water interconnect. This is a critical piece in enhancing our system resiliency since it will ensure greater continuity of service should either plant be compromised due to weather or other issues. That pipeline will actually move treated water from one end of the city to the other when it's completed. So if one facility goes out of service for whatever reason, the other facility can provide water throughout the city. We've completed about 18 percent of that project so far. We propose to complete an additional 62 percent within the next five years, and that 62 percent will move water from Draper throughout the city with the exception of the far northeastern side, and that piece will be, that 20 percent piece will be completed the next five-year So in solid waste, we have, we're in the process of buying the recycle carts, the new recycle carts. The delivery is scheduled to begin in December 2017 this year. The carts will be the same size as Big Blue. It will enable single-stream recycling that we plan to begin in 2018, and we will be able to handle cardboard in that single-stream recycle. So everything that we recycle, plastics, glass, cardboard, aluminum, all that can go into the one can, and it'll be picked up and collected accordingly. So we will no longer have to deal with cardboard. And that's pretty significant because that really helps us extend the life of our landfill out into the future. So right now, things are going pretty much as planned, so we anticipate starting to pick up the new recycle sometime early spring of next year. So that's the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Just one thing I wanted to compliment you on. I noted in the report that the conversion of over half of the solid waste fleet is going to result, conversion to natural gas, of course, is going to result in us saving about $450,000 annually on the budget. Keep converting. That's a great program. And then the second question I had, as far as interconnectivity is concerned between Draper and Hefner, when we go through a drought period like we did the last couple of years and Hefner was so low, when will we be able to funnel water from Draper to Hefner when we're in a drought like that? That be within the next five years?
Councilman, we don't anticipate moving raw water from Draper to Hefner. The water that will transfer between the two will be treated water, so we can handle the demands through the treated water capacities of either facility.
But that will allow us to do more treated water out of Draper, if you will, and less out of Hefner, which will effectively keep the lake at a higher level.
I see. So you could serve customers who normally get their water out of Hefner, but for, you couldn't, but as far as physically putting the water into the reservoir, there wouldn't be any sense in doing that since it's already been treated?
No, sir. And that was studied, and it really wasn't particularly cost-effective to do that.
Makes sense. David?
Chris, we're still in a water rationing system, aren't we, as far as?
We prefer the term water conservation. Yes. And it's the way we do life, and so, yes, we are in a situation where we do have odd even year-round water usage.
Well, I'm supportive of that, and I was just going to say that I think even though we're kind of flush with water currently, that can change, just as we all recognize. And maybe we could again step up our efforts to remind our customers of the importance of conservation, because you never know when things can change. And while up until this most recent year, California was a great example to look at as far as a water crisis impacting so many people, it's easy for people to get out of that habit once, you know, rain returns and we have a lot of rainfall just to overcome those drought periods. So I would encourage that we continue to emphasize that water rationing as much as possible. And then finally, is there ever a chance we would experience what Flint, Michigan experienced with respect to their water supply? And what do we do with some of the older neighborhoods where the infrastructure was put into place? I'm not quite sure when, maybe in the '30s.
Well, the problem in Flint wasn't the infrastructure. It was the water itself.
Water treatment?
It was the water itself.
I see.
And a lack of oversight. But what have you guys?
It was both, because you're correct, it was that, but that wouldn't have happened if they didn't have lead pipe in the ground. Where we have both proper oversight and, I won't say no lead, but very, very few.
We've been testing our system. We were required by EPA to test the system for copper and lead, and that's primarily the house plumbing. Our pipes are not lead. And so we test throughout the city randomly, we test for, in the older areas, for copper and lead concentrations, and we are compliant. So we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as your conservation, I'd like to mention, we are, we have a pretty good conservation program, but we're stepping it up. We're actually going out to the apartments and the office parks and the large water users for irrigation, and we're working with those folks to help them set up their system to irrigate more efficiently. We're taking treated wastewater and using it for non-potable uses, that's kind of redundant, but non-potable uses in certain areas to extend our water supply and our treated water capacity. So we use it for cooling, we use it for irrigation, and we also use it for other industrial purposes. So in recycling that water, it extends our resource, our raw water and our potable water resource, further out into the future. So we're doing a pretty good job on water conservation, and we have mandated an odd-even outdoor watering cycle, to where odd addresses water on the odd days, even addresses water on the even day. So we're moving to a point where our conservation is pretty aggressive. Roughly speaking, our per capita, per day usage is, it's pretty good. I know that a lot of places, it's about 160 gallons per person per day, and we're down to below 150.
And there's been improvements in regards to that, and when I say improvements, a lowering of per usage.
Yes, sir.
Over the last five or 10 years through the conservation efforts that we've promoted.
You may see, we have a published 180 gallons per capita per day, but that includes all of the uses, all the commercial, industrial, and all uses throughout Oklahoma City. What I look at, what we look at, is the residential water use as the indicator as to how well we're doing.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Laura?
Yeah. Question. The dump site at Southwest 15th and Council, a number of years ago, that was expanded in its capacity to handle trash, and the dump site operator put some money, Jim, if you remember, into escrow to turn that, when the dump site is filled up, into a low-impact park?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't heard anything, and I've been regretful in asking this question. What is the current lifespan of that particular dump site, and how close to the end of it are we?
I'll see if somebody knows the answer to that question, because I don't.
Brett Weingart, Assistant Director. We've done studies on that with consultants through OSEAT in the past, and because of the expansion of that facility, they were estimating 15 to 20 additional years. But that change is based upon the volumes, how many storms, and how much waste gets put in there.
So we're talking about 15 to 20 years from right now?
That was, that study was two years ago.
Two years ago. Thank you, sir.
I got one question. You talked about collaborating with the other departments. You mentioned something about mowing and road maintenance. So just to be clear, is your plan to offload all of that onto parks and Public Works as like, basically where you're not responsible for that anymore?
That's correct. With a small exception, around our booster pumping stations, our staff has to be there anyway, so they cut those. But Parks cuts around our lakes, around our reservations along the roadways, and so they do the lion's share of that work. We've developed an agreement with them to take over all the mowing and litter pickup and ice removal.
I think that's a good idea, because there's a lot of times where city-owned property has tall grass and people call in and complain about it. And then, and then we have to figure out, I know, you know, over there by Wiley Post Airport, on the west side of it, we were always in, we had no idea whose responsibility it was because it, okay, is this Water Trust because the canal's there, or is it the airport, or is it, or is it Parks because there's a, because there's a bike trail there also? So it was, it's good that, if we can somewhat minimize that confusion, so.
Yes, sir.
Ed, do you have anything? Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Parks Department, and Doug Cooper is here. He may have pictures of small children.
Morning. Thank you, Doug Cooper, Parks and Recreation, for the record. Start in the middle of it. That makes it shorter. Thanks, Mike. I won't have to, I won't have to sweat as bad. It's always difficult to follow your peers when you're presenting budgets, and the eloquent Chris Browning and his ability to state the facts. I'm not an engineer, so I get diverted fairly easily. So anyways, Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services, I want to make sure that we remember that we provide for total quality of life for our citizens in our city. Our mission is to provide Oklahoma City Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department Recreation and Cultural Services Department. recreation and cultural activities for all of our residents to enjoy an enhanced quality of life. And you can see from top to bottom that we pretty well cover the aspects just in those five slides of what we try to bring to our community. Our five, our business areas are obviously the administration and recreation, parks, grounds maintenance, and cultural services. But under administration is our park planning and landscape architects, our central business office, marketing, and staff support for six commissions and communities. Couple of the highlights that I wanted to point out from the staff, the planning staff is now obligated to deal with the impact fees and plan review. So we have already dealt with dozens of existing developments that were already underway and working with those developers to make sure that the work they've already accomplished as it relates to parks and rec-oriented activities, open space, playgrounds, picnic shelters, walking paths, that they got credit for those things. And where we did see a deficiency, we were able to work with them so that they could add an asset or expand something so that they could qualify for that discount on the neighborhood impact fee. So I think we've been real successful. We have recently reviewed two brand-new Platts that have come into existence recently. And again, we're working with both development services and the developers to make sure that they understand the rules as it relates to the impact fees, so that they can be on the front edge and we can give them every possible deduction that they deserve going forward, so that those reduced costs can be added, passed on to the ultimate buyer of the residents going forward. The central business office will more than likely review 4,800 special event permits and rentals of our park assets going forward for this year. Marketing has improved our ability to get the word out of all the good work that our Natural Resources and Recreation Division has done for improving programs and offerings as it relates to those service levels, and we'll get into that in a little bit. The Civic Center Music Hall, everybody's well aware of the facility there, primarily for Mr. Stone's edification. Not only do the staff produce great quality customer service and support to our resident companies and anybody wanting to do a performance at the building across the street, but we also have a contract to manage the Performing Arts Center out at Rose State at the Hutterberg Center. So again, we have been sought out for that expertise, especially from a customer service perspective. And for the second year in a row, we are actually providing the customer service and customer relations at the World Series that's going on this week out at the Softball Hall of Fame. It's staff from the Civic Center that is providing the ushers and the ticket review people and things along those lines. So we're excited about those opportunities. The, the numbers of participants that have viewed shows at the Civic Center has been a little bit volatile because of the economy, not as much disposable income. So, but in '16, we had 361,000 people view shows at the Civic Center. We anticipate to be on track for that same number and maybe slightly higher. As you know, we had The Lion King the last three weeks. The performances ended this past weekend, and we had a phenomenal, and I want to make a shout out to the Civic Center Foundation and the Broadway Series LLC that brought those shows this year with the culmination of The Lion King. And of course, our numbers should match what we did last year, possibly exceeded because of a three-week run of The Lion King. And next year, as you all know, we've got Hamilton coming. So right now, it's only a two-week show, so buy your tickets early when they, when they go on sale, get your season tickets. So again, we think the Civic Center does a dynamic job of providing an opportunity for lyric and the symphony and ballet, but also the Broadway Series. Our largest division is grounds management. And again, some of my thunder was stolen by Browning and the eloquent questions that were brought up as it relates to grounds maintenance. But we did take on the responsibility this spring. We had to do some fast adjustments and things along those lines, working with Doug Dollar and his staff to make it happen. But we actually took on an additional 540 acres from the Water Trust. We were already performing services on about 900 acres of Water Trust property before this agreement went into place. But again, some of you saw the reality of the quality of work that we do and thought that we could pass that quality on to other public properties. And so, we took on another 540 acres for the Water Trust. And they, they are contractually obligated to pay us for those services. So when we get into the budget numbers, you'll actually see a slight increase in our budget rather than a decrease, but we'll get into those numbers a little bit later. Some of the outstanding work that we do do is tree maintenance and emergency management. In all honesty, in a lot of cases, especially in winter events, the forestry unit is the first to respond to a natural occurrence. Nobody knows how bad an ice storm might get, but as ice storms hit, they break trees, the trees fall into our street right-of-ways, our staff goes out almost immediately to start taking care of those and getting them out of the way. And of course, as storms ramp up, then all the rest of the organization, city organization ramps up as well and gets out there and performs services. But a lot of times, the Parks, Grounds, Maintenance, Forestry Unit is first on to respond to ice storms and things along those lines. Again, we're excited about the agreement with Aqua and going forward. And of course, I threw this slide in just to remind everybody of the great partnerships that we do try to develop. And one of those was with the Community Foundation and the State Forester, who provided us with new assets and new tools to manage our urban forest. But the biggest thing, again, going back to Ms. Browning's presentation and environmental sensibility and responsibilities, we can, you know, towards our non-attainment status with the federal government, we can now quantify what our tree value is for reducing our carbon footprint and reducing stormwater runoff and things along those lines. So again, it's a great tool, and I think the citizens will benefit from that gift decades out into the future as we use that tool to plan our urban forest further. Natural resources, this is the Canal and Field Horticulture Group, Fisheries Management, Martin Park Nature Center, and Will Rogers Gardens, to be specific. Again, for Mr. Stone's edification, since he's new on the council, the whole canal system is actually park property, and half of the sidewalk, any other side of the channel is park real estate. So the staff takes care of the majority of that, keeping it clean, keeping the plants and debris free of the canal and trying to keep that up. The Fisheries Management, we, in this year alone so far, we have already introduced 300,000 fish, fingerling fish into our close-to-home waters, Lake Hefner, Stanley Draper, Overhouser, Crystal, Kitchen Lake, to name a few. So we've already done 300,000 fishery introductions this year alone. We've got about 300,000 more hybrid bluegills being raised at our fisheries to be introduced into, again, into our close-to-homes. So we're excited about the continued offerings from that aspect. The Martin Park staff, although their building has been closed most of this winter, we still have a lot of people visiting Martin Park, and we're looking forward to the reopening of the actual nature center out there. And of course, the Will Rogers Gardens was also closed, the building was closed for most of the winter. So our End of Air LFRs will be slightly down because we couldn't accommodate our renters for this year. But nobody was displaced, nobody had to disband. We made accommodation for the garden council clubs to go to one of our other facilities, either the Will Rogers Senior Center hosted some of those garden clubs, or our event center at Will Rogers was able to accommodate some of those, the rock clubs, the photography clubs, the Lily Society, and all those people were taken care of during our construction there. I think, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say how proud I am of the recreation staff in producing high-end quality programming for our citizens. The rec center staff have stepped up their game in providing unique programming opportunities across the whole city, and they've been very good at collaboration between themselves. You know, everybody knows that you can have a business plan or a program that gets created in one site and it might not work. But they're willing to share that plan and all of the assets that go along with it with another center and to see if it will go at that. And we've had great success. It might not go at one center, but it gets picked up by the citizens at another center. One of the other things that we have done in the three years that I've been here is stepped up our game, no pun intended, on athletics. Our numbers consistently go up in all levels of programming. In adult league participations, in just a year's time, we've gone up 1,000 participants from '16 to '17. Our youth programming has gone up 2,300 between 16 programming and 17 seasons. So it's indicative of the quality of what we're bringing to the game. With us managing and programming Window Wizard Hunt, those numbers are exploding over there. Again, you helped us create opportunities at Wheeler and Stars and Stripes. We went in and renovated those ball fields so that we have a better product to offer our citizens. Our senior centers programming, the visitation is up 8,000 from last year to this year. We had 10,000 visitations last year, we had 18,000 estimated for this year. And of course, we don't include maps at this time because they just opened, but going forward, we will have a sidebar in our presentations of the experiences and the performance measures that the MAPS facilities are obligated to maintain through their contract.
So Doug, just to clarify that, those senior centers are at our own rec facilities at our parks?
Yes, ma'am. It's Will Rogers Senior Center and the Woodson Senior Center. Yes, ma'am.
Those are amazing, fabulous numbers.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Picking up on that.
And I would tell you, thanks to Mr. Couch, our wellness center number one in North Oklahoma City hit the magic number of 2,500 members today. So that's really encouraging.
I'm one of them too. Every day. I got to. Stress management. One of the things that I really want to point out from a recreation's perspective is we're running probably 3,000 people every weekend. There's soccer games going on at Window Wizard Hunt, between the participants and the members of the family that come out and watch their kids play. If you haven't been out there, it's in between seasons right now, but you ought to go by there and just look at the quality of craftsmanship that the grounds maintenance folks have done in providing that space, the recreation for their programming. Community partnerships, again, we couldn't, we couldn't continue to do the level of service we are doing in this downturn economy if we didn't have partners. And in this case, they accomplished almost $7,000 worth of work. And that was with only about 45% of our partners responding to us this year. We still catalog 110,000 volunteer hours, and we're talking materials. You know, we have, our partnership with OKC Beautiful helps us, they actually, the companies that they contract with, the do medians, actually plant to beautify our city. And because of that partnership, especially with OKC Beautiful, we actually were participants in receiving the President's Special Recognition Award this year, along with the other partners in that group was Republic Bank, the Visual Arts Coalition. And of course, our pride is shared with the planning department through Robbie Kinzel, that, you know, the whole visual arts and public art and things along those lines. So again, we can't do it without our community partners. Recreation, again, leading for results. This is one of your peer items, enhancing recreation opportunities and community wellness. We had 1,250 program offerings between our Natural Resources and our Recreation Division in getting people outdoor, getting people active, and having opportunities in specialized programming offered this year. So again, 1,250 programs that the recreation staff and the Natural Resources staff are Leisure trends, we want to continue to try to make sure that we are meeting the goals of our citizens, but from a professional perspective, we like to see what, how we are stacking up against our peer cities and things along those lines. The national trends are leaning towards, you know, one park for every 2,200 residents. Right now, we're one park to every 3,900 residents. It's a little harder, you know, I continue to educate my staff that this is a great number. We are really where we need to be with a city of our size. I mean, all of us can drive five minutes from where we live and be in Tall Grass Prairie. We don't need to own all that, like other municipalities that are landlocked, that are built out, things along those lines. We provide what we need to be providing. We can always do better. There are lots of parts of the city that we still need to expand into that don't have parks and rec opportunities, and we hope to be able to close that gap with the 2017 GEO bond. And of course, all of the additional work that MAPS does in creating new trail systems brings all of our citizens that much closer to actually having access to parks. So our numbers will get closer to that 2,266 just with MAPS participation. But God willing, and the voters vote for the 2017, we can close that gap even more with the next bond program. Again, one of those indicative numbers. National average runs about 12.2 acres per thousand. We're at 6.8. But again, our citizens have access within our city limits to a lot of open space already. We don't need to own it all and provide it all. We can rely on other people to do that. But...
I think what you're pointing out is that some cities are responsible for school playgrounds, and we are not. So it doesn't show up in the data.
That's correct.
And it drastically throws off the relationships there. So just one of those asterisks that doesn't always get pointed out by agencies that rate cities and parks.
Plus, plus all the little municipalities that we are bordering with or in conjunction with, they have a lot of assets that our citizens get to participate in as well. So again, we're doing, we're doing great. I have no major concerns as it relates to this correlation at this point in time. But as you can see, we exceed the trails that have, we have available to our citizens going forward. So, and we're going to add to that and keep that going. Yes, sir.
Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to get a pet peeve on the record one more time. You mentioned the relationship between the schools and the parks. We have a school in Oklahoma City, Windsor Hills Elementary School, has a very nice little park in there, but you can't use it because they lock it up.
We've looked at that, and our Parks Department has tight stipulations on the type of green space that we will oversee and condone. And our regulations are tighter than school districts use, because when school districts are using the parks, they have a lot of people around. There's teachers around and things like that. When we create a green space that we're going to provide oversight for, can't have a lot of those nicks and crannies where people could hide and things like that. So there's a distinct difference between what we'll adopt and what we won't adopt. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's the reality when we've tried to work with the schools.
I prefaced it by saying it's a pet peeve, so.
Yeah. All right.
So Bill Crum yesterday wrote about this topic and talked about the trust for public land, kind of making this recommendation to cities as a way to increase their park score, and that a lot of cities that didn't used to work with schools are now implementing that and improving the number of access to citizens. Is there a way to enter into those discussions with the school districts or to look at what other cities have done? Because there are other cities that didn't used to do it, just like us. Because there are other cities that didn't used to do it, just like us, that are now doing it, and they might have had some of the same roadblocks. Is there a way to look at what other cities are doing, best practices, and enter into dialogue with the school districts?
Very good question, and as the mayor pointed out, there are certain conditions that we face that other municipalities don't. A lot of east of the Mississippi, there's one school district serving that city. So it's easier to come up with agreements with one school district rather than, what do we have, 36 school districts that?
24.
24. Trying to get an MOU with 24 school districts. We do have a pretty good cooperative venture with Oklahoma City Public Schools. We do get to use their space, they get to use our space, not to the degree that we can claim it right now for the TPL. But we are trying to explore that. We're in constant communications with TPL to try to figure out, because the amount of landmass that we have also skews those datas as it relates to our scoring. You know, not too many cities have 621 square miles, but only 650,000 residents. So you're supposed to have a certain number of open space for that 621 square miles, and it's just not practical for us to be able to accomplish that. If we were to compare ourselves with Boston that has, you know, 30 square miles, you know, with their masses, you know, that makes it slightly different, one school district. Well, the mayor there is responsible for the school district, so it's an easy thing in Boston. But that's part of our dichotomy that we have here, and it's similar in all of the states that are on I-35. We're all, we all have diverse school districts serving our residents, and it's a tough one for Dixon.
Does it have to be all or nothing? I mean, if a school has a park that happens to be in conformance with our standards, could we open that up to the public?
Again, the way that TPL, and I'd love to sit down and one-on-one on this one, but the way that TPL has the scoring is what the city spends per capita for parks and recreation operations, we can't necessarily claim what the school district spends on their green space assets, and that's part of the issues that we have with trying to report.
Well, I'm not necessarily talking about just trying to raise our park score, but maybe to what Larry's talking about, about increasing access to neighborhoods.
And I think that's a valid point, and that's something that we all should be striving for, is working out with other school districts for those school properties within our city limits, having accessibility to those. It's a good point.
Thank you.
I think you already answered my question, but these numbers don't, with that last answer, the, these numbers don't include privately held parks and pools and things that are owned by HOAs.
And again, that's one of those interesting facts, and we are in communications with the TPL right now as it relates to how we can, because in all honesty, as we allow for the deduction for those neighborhood parks to be built by those developers, they're in essence actually using city money technically, because otherwise they'd have to pay a fee into us to provide that resource. So, you know, it's probably one that the attorneys could take a look at, but I look at it as, if we give them a deduction, we are, the citizens of Oklahoma are investing to a certain degree in that park, and whether we can claim that, we're working with TPL to see if we can do that.
But we aren't responsible for any maintenance.
That's correct. And we really don't want to get into too many more of those maintenance agreements for those little neighborhood parks at this point in time. Public expectations, we kind of went on that one a little bit. I do want to draw your eye to the bottom of the chart, and maintenance of local parks. You know, I think we got a crow about that, even with the downturn in the economy, we still have a 71% approval rating from our citizens for the maintenance of the parks, even with the budget cuts that we've had to endure. Again, some numbers that we kind of are proud of, 145 new trees planted. We have, with our civic center, we have a $30 million economic impact on the city. 56% of our citizens live within a half mile of a park or a trail now, and that's going up because, again, because of MAPS, but also because of the 2007 GEO bond. We've still got some trails to build from that bond offering, and we hope to, again, accomplish this in multiple ways with the 2017 GEO bond. I do want to read a few passages, bear with me, "The Value of Parks and Recreation." Conservation: Public parks are critical to preserving natural resources and wildlife habitat which offer significant social and economic benefits. Local park recreation agencies are leaders in protecting open space, connecting children to nature, and providing programs that engage the community in conservation. The more we can get people out to see how the natural environment can grow, the better we can support Chris Browning's efforts on water conservation by using natural plants, native plants, or less water-reliant plants in our own home plantings. Get to the nitty-gritty of our budget, our proposed operating budget is $27,294,000. We have a small capital budget of $421,000, and our non-operating budget is at $3,307,000. The non-operating budget, we have to put numbers in there. We have royalties from oil and gas that accumulate, not as much as we'd like to see accumulated as we all would, but in order for us to use those funds, we've got a budget for those, and that's what that number is. So our proposed budget is $31 million. Again, we're 187 personnel, that number is, well, I'll get into that on the next, one of the next slides as it relates to the changes. We actually made the conscious choice with this last 4% budget cut that we were asked to perform, to keep the working force out in the field so we could continue doing grounds maintenance, we could continue offering the great program. So we made a conscious choice not to get into the line crews, we actually eliminated management staff. We eliminated our marketing director, and we eliminated our management specialists in the organization to be able to keep the workforce working out in the field. But all total, we have a net increase of two positions because of the agreement we created with Ocwen. We actually put on a number of equipment operators and ground maintenance workers so we can accomplish that additional 540 acres of work that we're going to do for Ocwen going forward. And one of the big additions from a revenue perspective is the agreement we have with the NCAA softball and softball Hall of Fame to provide those customer service reps out there. It was revenue that we had not projected that we would have going forward.
One thing I saw in the report was the mention of three new major softball tournaments. Can you explain that to us a little, what you know about that?
Well, I'm going to have to plead that we're hoping for the second two. They led us to believe that, again, that we did such a great job this year, we're doing such a great job this week out there right now. They think that they might be able to get to more tournaments. They haven't secured those, but they wanted us to put us on notice that, so the revenues that we've claimed in the budget is pretty much just strictly for the tournaments happening this week. Any new money that those two new tournaments that they hope to secure will be gravy on top of what we're making right now. Capital improvements, I love this shot. This was the groundbreaking for the Will Rogers Trail out at Will Rogers Park for MAPS. The big one right now is out at Martin Park, where the renovations to the building is about $420,000. Those of you that have been to Martin Park know that when you came in from the parking lot, you came up against a brick wall, and you tried to figure out where the entrance was. It was kind of backwards in my opinion. So we've reversed the building, we're going to have the front entrance facing the parking lot so it welcomes you as you come into the park. The back door, if you will, is now an education plaza and will lend itself to great programming. We are trying to secure the interior exhibits now. It's going to be a really dynamic space when we're completing. But one of the partner groups, again, that goes towards our non-budgeted improvements is the $300,000 donation by Wilderness Matters to create an elevated walkway and pause points that get you above, up into the tree canopy so you have a better vista look. So that construction has started, and we're excited about that $300,000 improvement that Wilderness Matters is bringing forward.
The one thing I'd say, I drive by the park almost every day, and so everybody knows, the park is still open, there's temporary parking, there's a lot of activity, so you can still use the park during this.
Oh yeah, we're still running probably 10,000 a week through Martin Park, even though the building is not available.
And Doug, could we really emphasize that the purpose of a lot of that Wilderness Matters extension was to provide additional accessibility for the park?
Exactly.
It's not just enhancements, but it's accessible enhancements so that folks can get further into nature.
That is correct. That's an important feature of it. The Will Rogers facility, we spent almost a million dollars on renovating the interior of the exhibition hall. Again, it's a dynamic space in there. The old ugly painted-over windows have been covered. We've put in some chandeliers, the heating and air conditioning system, the roof and everything else has been renovated. So it's a dynamic space, and I think we can actually get more people through the facility. Again, at Will Rogers, we renovated the historic Redstone Shelter out there. We took the fence that was down from around the facility, it's more of a welcoming facility. And again, as you can see in the larger picture, we've added accessibility, so the whole place is now ADA compliant, so we're proud of how Will Rogers Shelter looks now. And again, Red Andrews, this is the municipal gym at Red Andrews, named for the basketball great from Oklahoma City. Reconditioned the floor, new paint jobs, redid some restrooms, expanded the fitness room to offer more opportunities. Again, this location, and I can't say enough about Missalier's work on keeping this rec center alive and well with all the growth of families in the midtown area now. This is going to be a dynamic space going forward for that whole community in midtown. Some of the trails and pathways that we've improved, these are before and after, apologize, we don't have the names on them, but Progressive Park, Flower Garden Park, and Swaddick Park all got new trail systems. If you look closely, you can see the white walkway that depicts the new addition in those parks. So again, giving a wellness activity to neighborhoods that used to have to walk in the street to get their exercise. So now we have a safer environment for them to do that. And of course, the final slide is what Red Andrews will look like after, again, the significant partnership between the midtown businesses and the hospital. We're completely renovating the exterior space of Red Andrews Park to make it a dynamic place, again, for the residents that are booming in that neighborhood. And I'd love to answer any further questions you might have.
All right, Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff and the way that you guys are working with the citizens on the Manuel Perez Park. I really appreciate the way that y'all go there, you listen to their ideas, but also able to kind of steer that committee in making sure that we end up with a doable plan. I also wanted to thank you for Wizard Hunt over there and the way that that facility is upkept. The, being able to take inner-city kids over there and play in sports in correlation with the Police Athletic League, and having them be able to play on a field where, you know, where they're hardly worried about breaking their ankle and, you know, a ditch running across the field or something like that is fantastic, and those kids really appreciate it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think, oh, sorry.
Also, how about giving our viewers an update on Woodson Park, the swimming facility of Woodson Park?
Woodson is open and available, so come swim, come learn to swim, like Larry did at that pool.
And the cost to swim at Woodson Park, a full-service pool?
Woodson is a free pool.
Thank you.
Meg?
Let me ask, I was just going to say, I think almost all of our departments work hard to create public-private partnerships, but none more than Parks probably that has so many community outreach programs. And I do think, shout out to Jack McMahon and his Wilderness Matters group, they're beginning to talk about working down on the river with us to, you know, expand accessibility down there. It's been a real important focus. And St. Anthony Hospital, the midtown guys, that, you know, just look at each of these that come together to make our resources so much more significant. And I also wanted to give a shout out for your tree guys. You talked about ice storms, but it's important to remember, we don't just have tree incidents with ice storms, but wind, and we, I don't think we would have won the marathon had it not been for the work that Parks and, in partnership with some private landscape guys, were able to clean the streets. So, thank you so much.
Ed?
I just want to echo what Todd said. I think in this three years, I think you've always really, really gone the extra mile to get citizens' input and that you really care, and it shows, and I'm grateful for that. I want to ask you about, when you were in Wichita, you guys did a program with the police department, you did park amenities for kids in the summer. You showed a decrease in juvenile crime. That's been replicated in other cities in America and in Europe. I think your police chief got international accolades for that. What a program like that, first, I just want to, I mean, I appreciate what you guys did there and that you get that, you know, investments in decreasing crime is not just about adding police officers, which is important, but there are other ways to do that, and you guys showed that. What would a program like that cost, or what did it cost in Wichita? What would it cost to try and do something along those lines here?
That's a great question, I appreciate the opportunity to respond. In all honesty, I think what we did in Wichita was a precursor to the STEAM program that is occurring now across the nation. And here in Oklahoma City, we are working with the planning staff that are responsible for CSBG and CDBG funding, and we are providing programming for that program right now. We offer them all of the recreation activities that go into their summer STEAM program. In fact, we just had some photographs delivered to our office from the kids going to our pools for swim lessons. So we're teaching inner-city kids that are participating in the STEAM program how to swim and do other recreational activities. So we did, we created a program for kids that had been to kindergarten up to 13 years of age, and we had two sites, one for the littler kids, one for the older kids, all in the same neighborhood, and it was predominantly Hispanic-Vietnamese community, and the police department saw a 33% reduction in juvenile crime over the eight-week summer period in that neighborhood. No tagging, no fighting, no petty crimes, things along those lines. So we're working with planning on those, that's where the funding came from. It was mostly CSBG funds that helped pay for the mentors, the counselors that were there every day for those kids for that program, and we're working on those, along those same lines right now with Shannon in the planning department to create those opportunities right now. And we hope to expand that into other areas so we can hit more of the population that needs that service this time of year.
And Doug, we've got our Police Athletic League activities spread out in lots of different parks.
That's correct.
Working with youth, and that same programming is very similar.
They, PAL is hitting it on, it does a great job, but they're a much smaller opportunity than what the Parks and Recreation Department is capable of providing to our masses. They're an intricate park, they're very important to us, but we have a presence in a lot more areas of the city and a lot different demographics right now. So, again, we're excited about the work that our professional staff provides the kids across the city as well.
Doug, on the GEO bond, there's $28 million for three golf clubhouses on capital. I mean, is that, are there no other capital needs or projects that would supersede that in terms of priority? I mean, is that the best use of that $28 million? Do we need all three at this, for this bond?
Well, let me clarify on the third one, that's the Jimmy Stewart Clubhouse. If we're successful in getting a successful vote for the 2017 GEO bond, the Jimmy Stewart Clubhouse is actually a portion of Clubhouse is actually a portion of the Douglas Rec Center. And the Douglas Rec Center is the original Fairgrounds building. How long has the fair been on the west side of town? That's how old that building is. It's not in very good shape. It weeps water weeks after it rains. So we want to tear that building down and build a new rec center for that community, for access to the Douglas High School folks and things along those lines. If we tear that building down, obviously, we've got to tear down the Jimmy Stewart Clubhouse, so we have to be able to replace it so the Jimmy Stewart golfers can continue to have dynamic spaces. We're looking at this expansion or this opportunity in the 2017 to provide assets in neighborhoods where we don't necessarily have a presence right now for outreach type of activities. Obviously, we have to work with the golf commissioners and things along those lines. But one of the things that we've seen in the Lincoln facility is more neighborhood people, not playing golf, but coming to the Lincoln Clubhouse and using it as a resource on the northeast side of town. And we have quality pricing so that everybody can utilize it for non-golf-related activities. We'd like to see that occur at Early Wine as part of this renovation. And of course, up at Hefner, the Parks and Recreation Department doesn't have a building resource available in that portion of the city right now. So we see this as an opportunity for possibly making a different style of Parks and Recreation available to non-traditional golf users. So I'd have to say it's a positive move from that aspect in allowing other people to have access to that green space, but not necessarily for golf activities.
Final question about, I'm confused about the downtown park naming process. We, I guess people submitted names and then a committee kind of maybe picked some of those or tweaked them a little bit and then now it's on the News OK site and people vote on the News OK site and then that's, can you explain that process?
Well, again, trying to get the whole community behind the MAPS Park. I think it was a great experience for people to offer what they think of for a name for a significant resource that they're going to have access now for the next 150 years. Allowing them to participate in the naming, I think, was a great, great piece of opportunity for our citizens to do it. Getting a committee to narrow the offerings down so that the same people have an opportunity to focus on five or six specific names to recommend to the Board of Park Commissioners, which is the official naming committee for you all, to take it to the Board of Park Commissioners and do the final steps in that activity to bring back to you with a specific naming opportunity, I think is a great way to keep the citizens involved and make them understand this is their park. The MAPS Park is their park.
Is the choice that gets the most votes on the News OK site the one that will be brought to council?
That is the anticipation we have, is that the number-one chosen name is going to be the one that gets recommended to y'all. Of course, you have the final say. It always comes down to the city council for approval.
Now, I can download like a Tor browser, I can change my IP address, I could vote 1,000 times for my home computer. I mean, are there, with, and each time it'll show a different IP address. Is, are there protections against that or?
We have a fairly significant way of trying to deal with that. Obviously, if you can change your IP, it makes it a little more difficult. But again, this is an opportunity for our citizens to be involved with a significant addition to the community and we think it's a positive move. Even if we get, you know, 10% of them to vote more than once, I don't think it really has that big of an impact on what comes forward. Obviously, if you all think it's not a good name, you have the right to say, send it back to the Board of Park Commissioners and say, "Try again." So, we'd be happy to participate any which way we can on this one.
Doug, just to test your stress management skills.
I'm going to have twice the workout tonight, I can see it coming.
I think the, if I can use this term, this regional approach to the parks, to where we have very elaborate parks like at Early Wine, South Lakes, Woodson, has been very successful. The usage is great. Now, this is where the controversy comes in. And unfortunately, Eric Winger isn't here, so we could put in a plug to get 119th Street widened west of I-44 to access South Lakes Parks because people will avoid exiting at 119th that should to go home just because of the traffic problems. But here's the point. The soccer facilities is a tremendous success. There are so many soccer players out there, it's hard to even envision the number. And what appears to be happening is, because it's kind of split, you know, west side is the athletic fields for soccer and then the east side of the park is the traditional park designed for, you know, park activities. There's an encroachment now occurring on the east side where just open space is now being utilized for additional soccer training, practices, things like that. So the people who just like to have a pure park are feeling pressure by the soccer teams, you know, taking more and more space. So that's the stress part that I want to share with you, is that some of the regular users of the park would like to see the soccer teams stay on their side of the fence and keep soccer over there and let the, you know, just open space continue to be used as a park. So, it's a problem with success, is all I can say. And perhaps, one of these days, there'll be a new feature with respect to a dog park that could be added on out there because it's a great park. Early Wine's a great park, Woodson's a great park. All these parks are great. Now, let me ask you another question, though. Just keep the, yeah, we're not through yet. So, I know there's a lot of program activities at these major parks, but in some of the smaller, more inner-city parks that I used as a child, like Brock Park, I think it's called Rotary Park down on Kentucky Avenue, close to Exchange. And then Wiley Post, and then the parks along Robinson, you know, north of 44th Street. Are we ever going to try to come in and reclaim those areas, whether we put in walking trails or more program activities? Or maybe there's program activities there. I just don't go there, so I can't really tell. But I'm just trying to ask, since that's kind of a lower-income areas, are we, what are we doing to address the needs of the people in those areas?
The Wiley Post complexes has 2007 GO money, so we are designing improvements for Wiley Post. And of course, by the action of the council, the new Manuel Perez Park will get benefit from that 2007 vote. So, yes, we have additional improvements to be planned for those parks. There are some improvements still in the 2007 for some of those south-side parks. We're working with Fields and Futures, they'll be, and you, the city council approved the donation for Lightning Creek improvements. And we're hoping to take some of the pressure off of South Lakes practicing on the open space by creating some of these opportunities with Fields and Futures. They're looking at Rotary and doing a donation at Rotary possibly two years from now to improve the offerings there. We're working with them also on an offering out at Lake Overhoser for an improved sports opportunity at the south end of Lake Overhoser on Aquit property out there, possibly eight to 10 soccer fields. Again, we're trying to find these resources so we can get some of the soccer practices off of the neighborhood parks and get them to stop wearing those out.
Yeah. Okay, last point. And again, since we're using personal privilege, the issue of how we offer temporary permits for special events, 5Ks, bike rides, things like that, you know, there's an interest in using city streets and all that to host these. And when they occur downtown and some people work on the weekends, it's disruptive. Could we add a line to that application for that temporary permit that says, "Have you considered using," I mean, yes, "using the trails or some park for your activity in lieu of coming onto the streets?" Since we are putting so much effort to expand our trails, it would be a great opportunity to expose all these runners and bikers to the great trails that we have. So we could just put an app, a line on the application that asks, "Have you considered using the trails for this event? And if not, why?"
Councilman, that's a complex issue because a lot of them want to be specific to a particular site. And I think that the merchants along some of those existing downtown sites like to have those events downtown. And I know it is an impact to some of the people that are on the weekends coming down to work and such, but it's, it's complex. Yes, we could have that line. The answer to that is yes. The question is, do we, is that what we want to do? And I don't know if I have the answer to that. It's more of a call.
I think the answer is yes, we do want that. And just to push more, to put more usage on those trails, I mean, we're building them, let's use them.
I think added, this weekend was pretty difficult with the bike race and the happenings at Mira Gardens, but we also have to look at the progress we're creating ourselves in the construction and things along those lines. Once we smooth that out a little bit, get the second Devon Tower finished and the complications that causes, the modern streetcar construction, I think we'll have even more dynamic spaces. But we are working with promoters now to suggest alternative opportunities. We're working with, we're going to be working with the Oklahoma City River Redevelopment Trust in streamlining their permitting processes and the costs that are in there. There's a section of the river that costs $2,000 for a promoter to have a 5K run on it. So we think that's maybe a little bit, a little bit too high. So we're working through some of those issues to make some of those assets a little more attractive for people to use.
You know, speaking of Boston, I think somebody referred to Boston earlier. Most of their events are along the river. You know, they've got a great riverfront and the two avenues that go along it, many times you'll see activities there or in the large expansive sidewalks out that they have outside of the big Boston Marathon, of course. But I think they really tried to focus to bring those types of events along the river system. And as ours continue to develop, I think a lot of thought should be given to pushing those events along the river. Let's use those facilities since we're putting so much resources into them.
It's a valid point and staff has recognized that and we're working towards new ways of trying to convince the 5Kers to use the downtown section of the river for their activities. But we want to be accommodating no matter what.
And as far as vendors, they can locate down there at least temporarily, or we could allow that to where they could still make money off the events. Thank you.
Sir?
I don't want to prolong the discussion, but the, all of the recreational things that the city does, I mean, we've highlighted those. I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the nonprofit groups because if you live in northwest Oklahoma City and are a little kid that's athletic, you're probably going to be involved in a PCO or a satellite group or a Northwest OKC. And so those groups, a lot of them use city-owned properties, parks, and they provide a great service and it actually relieves a lot of the pressure off of our Parks Department. So I just want to thank them for everything they do because it's a lot and I'm involved with them quite a bit, so.
Since we're doing personal privileges, I just want to echo-
Sorry, Mr. Couch, I didn't mean to start this.
I just want to echo your comments about Lincoln Clubhouse. For northeast Oklahoma City, Lincoln Clubhouse is basically a community event center. Northeast Oklahoma City, we are limited in where we can have community events. And so a lot of community events, especially by nonprofit organizations, by churches and other organizations, they utilize Lincoln Clubhouse because it's affordable. And a lot of times, we have had to, different community organizations, different churches, different organizations as a whole, had to go to Ward Two for events. So instead of going to Ward Two, they can have their events in Ward Seven and the events are affordable. To rent out the clubhouse is affordable for them to provide the food is definitely affordable. And so I can only, again, talk about Lincoln Clubhouse and the success for the community. It's been a major success for northeast Oklahoma City. In the 2017 general obligation bond, we do have a clubhouse that's being proposed for Jimmy Stewart. One of the things Doug left out, that the current Douglas Center, we're only able to utilize maybe 30 to 40% of the building because of the environmental issue. So, for example, the second floor, we're not able to use the second floor at all because of those environmental issues. And then part of the first floor, we're not able to utilize as well. So, and the clubhouse is a part of the Jimmy, well, a part of the Douglas Center. So, and like I said, I can only speak for Ward Seven, but that clubhouse is definitely needed since we are, hopefully, we'll be able to tread down that building. It's definitely needed.
Mayor, a couple of points of follow-up here on Councilman. The clubhouse is, or just not clubhouse, is also long-term to make the golf courses, the golf system economically feasible as we go forward and it won't become a drain on the general fund. So there's an economic side of that to minimize impact on the general fund as we go forward.
At Hefner, are we adding on or tearing down and rebuilding?
Looking to tear down, rebuild. And then also, to the Police Athletic League, two weeks ago, Chief City did an in-depth discussion of what the Police Athletic League dug, and we can always do more, but they're doing a pretty good job of doing exactly what you're talking about, is giving alternate activity, having the police involved to influence children in other manner. And I don't know if you all, all of you know, but Councilman Stone coaches a Police Athletic League soccer team out of Bodine, right?
I am a Bodine bobcat, honorarily.
And so, he has stepped up and gone beyond what most of us do.
Oh, it's fun. I get a lot more out of it personally than kids do, I'm sure. So, it's a lot of fun. We have a great time.
And then the last thing is a point of history. I don't know if you all know or not, but the fairgrounds used to be located where Douglas High School is and the Douglas Center is. And the Douglas Center used to be part of the old fairgrounds buildings that were over there when the fair was over there and they relocated, I think in '55 maybe, to the present location of the fairgrounds. So that was the state fairgrounds prior to '55 or '56.
All right. Michael?
Well, it says "public comments" after the three. So we have to go to airports next. I like your math, Michael, but we'll play it by ear.
Good morning, Mark Cranenburgh Airport's Department, and I'm accompanied today by Assistant Director Scott Keith and Business Manager Kim Sotomayor. Josh Ryan will be working our presentation today. Happy to present the airport's budget for next year and also to talk about what's been going on with the airport this last year and what we have planned upcoming. You'll find the budget for the airport on page C3 in your budget book. I'd like to remind you of the mission of the airport, which is to provide for the management, the operations, maintenance and development of the city's three airports to our tenants, users- users and the general public so that they can have a safe and efficient transportation system. Will Rogers World Airport is our commercial service airport. We serve about 3.7 million passengers a year on six major carriers and they offer service to 23 non-stop destinations and we average about 70 daily departures. We also provide facilities and operations for Wiley Post Airport and Clarence E. Page Airport for our general aviation users. The Budget Office asked us this year to provide some interesting facts about our departments and I'm kind of glad they did that. I'd like to share a couple with you if you'll go back to the, don't, Joshua, moving forward too fast there. Go back to the Will Rogers. So Will Rogers World Airport, in case you don't know, we have two long parallel runways, about two miles long, or put another way, 27 football fields that are stretched end to end, and that's including the end zones there. We also, on average per week, at the ticket counters, we check about 24,300 bags a week and that's, that's amazing. The last few weeks, I will tell you that we have an uptick in that. We've actually been doing over 30,000. And so we've screened about two and a half million bags total in the past two years. That's not even counting the bags that are screened through the security checkpoints. Now Wiley Post Airport, it's, it's always been a noteworthy airport because of the amount of commerce that's generated primarily from business traffic. But you can see we have about 80 private and corporate jets which are based at Wiley Post. So when you consider over 5,100 public use airports, it ranks in the top 4%. And then Clarence E. Page Airport, if you don't know, has an interesting history. It was previously known as Simron Field. Its name was changed in 1978 and of course the current namesake Clarence E. Page. When it was Simron Field, he operated several flight schools that trained hundreds of pilots for the World War II effort. I'm often asked at the airport, what do you do at the airport? And what I can really, my short answer is that we build and we lease. We build and we lease. And so we manage a very robust capital improvement program and I think you'll see that today as evidenced by the wide variety of projects that we complete and actually that we have upcoming and ongoing. And we also manage over, about 500 leases, contracts, permits and agreements. So very busy. Before I get into our department issues and our performance indicators, I would like to give you a brief overview of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust budget that was approved a couple of weeks ago. These represent the major categories of our sources of funds. We have our building rents, which is comprised of lease payments in the terminal building and also other of the buildings and hangars that the airport trust owns. We have landing fees which are generated by a calculated rate per 1,000 pounds of landed weight that's charged to our passengers and freight carriers. Our public parking revenues are derived from the over 7,200 parking spaces that we have for the public that's available in our garages and our surface lots. Our concession revenues are derived from our food and beverage and retail concessions in the terminal as well as from the nine rental car companies that operate out of the new rental car center. And then fuel sales revenues are mainly generated from all the fuel that's retailed on the airport. We get a certain calculated rate per gallon and from also from those tenants that have self-fueling privileges in accordance with their leases. Our customer facility charges are the user fee that is paying for the debt for the new rental car center, also pays for the operations and maintenance of the facility as well as the buses. And then we have a variety of other airport charges, which is mainly comprised of maintenance reimbursements, apron fees and ground rentals. So a total airport charges to our tenants and users of $58,172,000. We also have other sources of revenue as well. We're still getting a little bit of oil and gas revenues and we use these revenues as matching revenues for our federal grants each year. We're budgeting a little bit of interest from our money market, not very much, $8,000. We also have our passenger facility charge revenues, which is a user fee which supports our capital program for eligible projects. And each year we get federal and state participation in the form of Federal Aviation Administration and Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission grants, and these are for eligible projects that we use to maintain the airfield as well as buy certain equipment. So other revenue of $16,480,000. We also are projecting $11,188,000 in carryover, which are prior year revenues that support our capital program. And then $3,750,000 for revenue bond proceeds which are to be used on construction. So the carryover, the revenue bond proceeds and projected revenues of $74,652,000 comprises the trust budget for FY18 of $89,590,000. And looking at our uses of funds, the operating expenditures, we have other services and fees. These are comprised of some of our major contracts at the airport, such as our parking management contract, aircraft rescue and firefighting contract and janitorial and security contracts. We have commodities which are representative of other services and supplies, debt requirements from prior financing of previous projects such as the last terminal renovation, the most recent constructed parking garage in the rental car center, and then the transfer to the airport's cash fund, which is our department operating account. And this is the number that is in page C6 of the city's budget for the trust component. So total operating expenditures of $45,922,000. We're also budgeting reserves, which are estimated funds that we anticipate receiving in 2018 to be used on future capital of $1,788,000. And then projecting a capital outlay of $41,880,000 and all these numbers balance the budget. I'd like to bring to your attention a few of the capital projects that we've completed that highlight our strategies to improve our infrastructure and also our environment for the traveling public. One of the projects we completed this year was to replace the asphalt ends of taxiway H or Hotel with concrete. This is the parallel taxiway, which is on the furthest east end or east side of Will Rogers World Airport, and it helps support the aeronautical development for the east side of Will Rogers. We also purchased three parking shuttles and this is noteworthy and now that our public parking fleet is completely 100% CNG. We also have a project that will be completed by July 1 and this is the effort, we've had a multi-year to realign Portland Avenue. So the last part is to energize the north, north phase of the lights that we purchased from Oklahoma Gas and Electric and we have a little bit more utility work to do and we'll be finished up. We also completed a upgrade project that actually runs from the terminal building all the way north to Airport Road. Significance of this project was it created 135 new irrigation zones, booster pumps to enhance our pressure, to provide ability to get better pressure throughout the entire project. And we have also all these zones that are going to be remotely controlled with cellular technology. At Wiley Post Airport, we've been under a multi-year effort really to just overhaul the entire airfield and we completed Phase Two, which to, which was to rehabilitate pavements on the airport's primary runway. And also we completed an upgrade on all of the associated lighting and signage. And the last project at Mike Monrone, we do a lot of mechanical system replacements and this one we did for the multipurpose building that was a boiler replacement project. Also at Mike Monrone, we completed a 17-acre apron project for hangar eight and nine. And I have other projects from Mike Monrone that I'll show you that we have upcoming a little bit later. What I'd like to do now is move into some of the departmental issues and some of our performance indicators that are relevant to those issues. Our first issue relates to factors that impact resources for funding airport operations and capital. The nature of the airline industry is that it can be very, very volatile. So the number of air carrier operations and the number of passengers can affect several airline-related revenue categories such as our public parking operation, our concession revenues and also our passenger facility charges. We also have increases in our cost of providing services as evidenced by contract increases with our janitorial contract and our security contract. So our goal is to increase and stabilize airport revenue. One of the strategic measures we have for this issue is to maintain our food and beverage and retail growth at 2% a year. And you can see going back the last few years, I'd like to talk briefly about each one of these. In FY12 and 13, you can see there was quite a spike and that's when the new concession coffee bean and tea leaf was introduced in the terminal. In FY13 and 14, we had record employments for calendar year 2014, almost 1.9 million boarding passengers. In FY14 and 15, we were down and that's mainly because the airport lounge was closed for a year while it was being renovated. And then you see the next year it was opened up with a new cross-grain brewery. And for FY16 and 17, our activity is slightly up. Another measure is to maintain our parking revenue per transaction at a growth rate of 2% a year. And to go through the same analysis, if you look at fiscal year 12 and 13, this was bumped up mainly because of the unfortunate tornado that impacted the off-airport operator. In FY13 and 14, we kept, I think, a lot of the displaced parkers that were as a result of that mishap. And then in FY14 and 15, we were down slightly. We had a lot of maintenance that we were doing in various levels of our parking garages. FY15 and 16, our employments were basically flat and you can see the bump in FY16 and 17, and that's directly related to our rate increase that we had last November. Our second issue relates to factors that we have to react to effectively. If we don't, it could have an impact on staffing and workload, funding requirements and long-term planning. I've already mentioned how the number of operations and passenger numbers can affect airport revenues, but we can also have fluctuations in the aviation industry. As so goes the economy, so goes really general aviation. We also have a lot of safety, security and environmental requirements we're subjected to that often come to us in the form of unfunded mandates. Some of these in particular are either FAA-related or with security TSA-related. So our strategy is to improve the airport environment for our travelers and our tenants through long-term planning and infrastructure improvements. Some of the measures on this issue is related in our commercial line of business. One of them is to track the percentage of airport certification work orders that we complete within three days of identifying the deficiency. These are airfield deficiencies that we actually inspect ourselves on each day that are regulated by the FAA. Our target is 93% and we're doing well at 100%. In fact, in February, we had a Federal Aviation Administration Annual Certification that we have to go through each year to ensure that air carriers can still operate at Will Rogers and we completed that without any deficiencies. We also track the percentage of days with zero incidents, security incidents. We have over 3,300 employees at the airport that are badged to go in either secure or sterile areas. When you have that many people that are badged and there is so much activity in the terminal building and our gates on the airfield, sometimes there are failures to secure jet bridge doors or baggage doors or airfield gates. In the general aviation line of business, we track the percentage of itinerant takeoffs and landings at Wiley Post. And you can see our target is 70%. That's really assertive. It's, it's quite amazing to see that much transient traffic operating at the General Aviation Airport and we actually did really well at 77%. An itinerant takeoff and landing is, is a landing that's from a transient aircraft. In other words, it's not from a aircraft based at the airport. We also track the percentage of days that the airport has a runway closed and you can see we did not do very well on this measure and it's mainly because we had our main runway closed for the entire year. We also track the percentage of total project cost as a result of change orders and amendments. And as much as we do projects at the airport, I'm very proud of how the staff is still doing a good job. And you can see that all throughout the years, we are still below our target of 5%. Our third issue deals with air service and we've done a really good job over the years attracting air service. But I am more proud of, in the last few years, we've done a great job sustaining our air service with all the airline cutbacks. In fact, Karen Carney, who normally does this presentation, is in Rhode Island now meeting with airlines today and tomorrow when recruiting air service. We know the growth of Oklahoma City's population and business activity will result in an increased demand for air service. Air service dramatically can affect economic development, tourism and convention business. So our strategy is simple, to attract air service to Oklahoma City. One of our measures is to track and grow passenger employments at 2% a year. That's really assertive when you consider our historical, history is about 1.6% growth and our master plan going forward is forecasting about the same. Here you can see the numbers haven't varied over the last few years. Now these are boarding passengers, these are not total passenger served, but we're anticipating really for 2018, pretty much flat numbers. We get these numbers from the airlines. These are what they project that will be flying into Will Rogers. One of the other measures that is very important to the airlines because it is directly related to their operating cost at Will Rogers is to track the cost per plane passenger. Our goal is to increase this by no more than 5% a year and we determine this rate periodically through rate analysis. You can see at the bottom of the chart, there's a small hub, medium average of $8 and we have always been well below that. And this is a benchmarking that's done by Airport's Council International in North America. They lag way behind, so the FY16 benchmarking data is not out. But our projected rate for FY16 is $6.24, still well below the $8 average. Just to remind you of our route map, we've got good air service to most connecting hubs. And again, we serve 23 non-stop destinations. To give you some highlights, American Airlines is going to be adding a third daily flight to Charlotte, North Carolina in August. Allegiant continues to expand in Oklahoma City. They'll be coming back with their seasonal service to Destin, Florida. And they, just this month, started service to Los Angeles, which will go throughout this summer. While departures are flat, I would say, from our boarding passenger numbers, airlines are upgauging aircraft. In other words, we have more seats year over year than what we had last year. In fact, we have 674 more than we had this time last year. And we are always continuing our efforts to secure non-stop service to Ronald Reagan's, Washington National Airport and New York's LaGuardia Airport. In our administrative line of business, we track the percentage of airlines that have increased or improved air service and 30% is really assertive. We've done really well at 83%. This measure goes back, it tracks actually a full year going back from December of last year. There are different ways to increase air service. I've talked about upgauging, which is adding more seats to aircraft or larger aircraft. But you can also have an air carrier that will increase frequency or the number of times it flies to a destination. A new destination can be created at the airport or a new carrier could enter the market. Our last issue deals with the amount of land that's available for development, increasing maintenance demands on vacant facilities and the growing cost of maintaining our existing infrastructure. Not dealing with these can prevent the trust from generating sustained revenue sources and it also can prevent the city from getting the benefits of extra jobs and sales tax revenues. So our strategy is to continue our land planning at all airports, including Will Rogers, which is the east side of Lariat Landing. In the maintenance line of business, we have a couple of key measures. We track the percentage of airport operating hours where major mechanical systems are functioning. We're doing well with this target. Some of the systems that are important to our tenants and the public are HVAC systems, our baggage systems and aircraft loading bridges. We also track the percentage of vehicles and equipment available for use, doing well with this as well. This is important for critical operations such as our parking shuttle buses, ice and snow equipment and fire trucks. I want to take you through a few of our projects that are upcoming and ongoing that are going to show that we continue to improve our infrastructure. We're underway right now with the upgrade to our parking and revenue control system. This is for our public parking operation. Our existing system is not supported by parts or agreements any longer. We're replacing all of the infrastructure in the garage and surface lots and the benefits will be revenue, better revenue tracking and control as well as we'll be providing some pay-on-foot kiosk. We'll also have space by space counts in Garage B and level by level counts in Garage C, which is the furthest garage to the north. We're about to bid the airport roadway and garage signage project in the next couple of months. This is a complete overhaul of all the roadway signage and garage signage and we also have plans to redo the terminal signage in the existing terminal and that will be redone when we do the terminal renovation, which I'll talk about in a moment. Station Two Parking. Many of you I know have issues with this. This is the first station that you come to when you come out of the, the central terminal down into the pedestrian tunnel. And this is showing the 24-inch very narrow escalator that isn't very useful. We'll be taking these escalators out. We'll be replacing the escalators with two larger, faster elevators. You may not know it, but- You may not know it, but this station already has two elevators with it, and we'll be renovating those as well. We'll also be, we'll be upgrading the mechanical room, which is nearby, upgrading the, and repairing the exterior finishes in the roof that's on top of this station, the two-story, as well as improving lighting and installing new sliding door, sliding doors. So it'll be a complete retrofit. We are, at the end of this month, complete with our terminal site package. This is the early site package. When we went into the terminal expansion design, it was evident to us that we needed to remove some barriers that didn't drag down the timeline of the terminal expansion, and these barriers were to demolish the cargo building that you can see in the lower-left picture, and it's gone now in the upper-right. We also relocated some utilities, and we are also in the process of relocating some The terminal expansion project. This week, we anticipate getting sixty-five percent design plans in. We hope to bid this later this year. To remind you of the goals of this project, it's to increase gate capacity with three new airline lease gates and one airport gate that'll be capable of handling a wide-bodied aircraft. Our goal is to improve service of airport functions. We'll be bringing the airport police up to an office on the ticket counter level, relocating airport operations back into the central terminal, and also enhancing the accommodations for the military welcome center. We'll be improving passenger processing dramatically with a new eight-lane security checkpoint that will be expandable to ten lanes in the future. Our exit lanes today will be turned into meter-greeter lobbies, and we'll be have, and we will have a lot more public circulation space. We're also upgrading the taxiway K connector, which is on the airfield that connects the terminal ramp to the airfield. This particular taxiway took a beating when we had a taxiway C and G project for a couple of years. We're about, we are out for bid for the upper-level deck structural repair project. This is a two-phase project. The first phase is to remove the soffit. When you come out of baggage claim, you can see that, you may remember or recall, there's an overhang there. We're going to be removing that. It's necessary to do that so we can move forward with Phase Two, which is an A and E investigation to see if any repairs are necessary to the bridge deck. That second-phase project will be done next year. We're also extending taxiway G, which is the airport's longest east-west taxiway across the Old Portland Avenue. The significance of this is it will create more aeronautical parcels, larger parcels, as much as thirty-acre parcels, to increase the potential for more aeronautical development in Lariat Landing. At Wiley Post Airport, we have a project to replace the maintenance facility, and as you can see, these pictures speak for themselves. We'll be adding a new office and maintenance bay. I mentioned Wiley Post is getting an overhaul on the airfield, and we're in the process of Phase Three, which is to rehabilitate taxiways A and B and also associated signage and lighting, and there will be a Phase Four in the future. At Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center, we have four people that are just dedicated to maintenance and capital improvements on the campus. We are responsible for electrical and mechanical improvements for the trust-owned buildings. We have several that we'll be doing in the next few years, and here you can see, we're budgeting about $2.6 million for next year. The trust is also responsible for a lot of building improvements, and when the trust owns the building, we're typically responsible for exterior, structural, and roof repairs. We also maintain streets and parking lots. In fact, there's seventy acres of parking lots we're responsible on the Mike Monrooney To summarize our budget, again, the proposed cash fund, which is the department operating account organized here by line of business, seventeen million, eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars. You can see that we have a hundred-and-twenty positions, and I, I would like to note that this will be the third year in a row we haven't asked for any net new positions. We do have some slight changes in the cash fund budget going forward, slight increase in insurance benefits and salaries, slight decrease in city-provided services. We are reorganizing two positions, deleting an administrative specialist position and adding a landside airport operations manager, and deleting a contract coordinator and adding the classification of a property technician to better reflect the duties of the work that's being done, so a total of $211,000. And the last thing I'll leave you with is a thought. A mile of runway can take you anywhere in the world, so end on that note. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. I have a question about the Mike Monrooney Center. What is our lease arrangement with, I assume it's with the federal government, and what's the length of that timeframe, and when is that up for renegotiation?
Every five years, the lease continues to renew. As you know, the government is subjected to annual appropriations, and it may interest you to know that the airport trust that was created in 1956, same year I was born, actually was created for Mike Monrooney. And the entire airport trust and all three airports that we operate and maintain has just grown beyond that. But the lease, we have lots of amendments throughout the years, and we're working on supplement forty at this time. So it's an ongoing lease that we enjoy very much. They lease a thousand acres of the eight thousand acres at Will Rogers, and it's been a great partnership over the years. We want to protect that.
Thank you. Ed?
Do you have any thoughts about the discussion about privatizing air traffic control and any implications for Oklahoma City?
The legislation that's going to be proposed on that has not been introduced yet. There was legislation that was introduced last year. It did not get support in Congress. Reminding of our federal priorities with the city are to support FAA operations and airport funding. We will want to make sure that anything that comes about with potential air traffic reform doesn't hurt those priorities. The legislation that was introduced last year actually had probably created more questions than answers as to how it would work, because the premise of the privatization is to have a board that's governed by stakeholders, and the airlines make up a great majority of that board as it sits today or as it's contemplated today. So we'll have to wait and just see what that legislation looks at before we can take a position on that.
All right. Mark, thank you for all your work.
If you don't mind, I would like to make one comment that's in the news on Real ID, if you don't mind. As you know, today was the date Oklahoma had the extension end. However, there's been a grace period now that's been given until July the 10th. The state does have its application in to Department of Homeland Security to get their driver's license compliant. As you know, the state did pass legislation this session that creates a two-ID system, one compliant and one non-compliant. I just wanted to say that I, I still need to watch this carefully. I'm concerned because if an extension isn't granted or if an ID isn't come up with, that we are in jeopardy in January 22nd of 2018, so that anybody that wants to fly domestically after that date would have to have a passport or a passport card or some other alternate approved form of ID that DHS recognizes. That's only a little over six months away. And as you know, when you make reservations, sometimes you're making reservations three or four months in advance. So even though January 22nd sounds like a long way away, it's right on us right now because people are making plans today. This needs to move forward as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Comments from council? Will we move? Okay. There's some people that have signed up to be heard. Tom Levercy?
I had one quick comment I wanted to make, if you don't mind. I want to thank Allen Contracting and its owner, Jeff Allen, and all their employees for getting Broadway Extension open a day early. That was great. And also...
We're going to have council comments.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of, I can see I led you in the, I meant on Mark's airport presentation. That's okay. That's my mistake. Yeah. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Need your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Levercy, and my wife and three daughters have joined me here in Chambers this morning. I live in the 2500 block in Northwest 42nd Street, Ward Two. With permission, I'd like to provide the council some photos and images I'll be talking about today. It's often quoted that the very definition of insanity is repeating the same activity and expecting a different result. For eleven years, the neighbors in our neighborhood have dutifully submitted issues to the Action Center. These have related to a single property relocated in the 2400 block in Northwest 42nd Street. Currently, the Action Center website has history going back to only May of 2011, and that history associated with this single property has over forty pages of issues that have been submitted. However, the reason I stand before council here today is that despite all the repeated actions, requests to the city, the result has not changed. Recently, the owner of the property in question has even purchased the adjoining property, and now the neighborhood must deal with two homes littered with junk and debris, ill-maintained and oversized RVs, and insufficient property upkeep. Therefore, I'd ask the council, how long is the City of Oklahoma City going to let this issue metastasize? Given the long history of the issues and the responses I've received from city officials on numerous calls and the specific code sections I cite, it's my opinion that the code enforcement organization does not have the tools that it needs. Now, that's either in the municipal code as it's currently written, or in the adequate support of the city attorney's office to prosecute extreme cases such as this to deal with habitual offenders. While we need to respect the privacy rights and individual property rights of individuals, those rights should not extend to the point they infringe upon the rights of others. What about the rights of the surrounding families? The right to not having their home values diminished? The right to not be confronted today with a blight on the neighborhood in which they live and raise their children? The right that the city will enforce the codes that ensures everyone's enjoyment of their homes and neighborhoods? The surrounding neighborhood is provided, is comprised of lower-income, hard-working families? They pay their mortgage and they struggle to make ends meet. My wife and I grew up in this neighborhood in the seventies and eighties. We've known these families for decades, and a person's home is often their most valuable and prized possession. I'm here to advocate for those friends and families that I've known for these years. If left unresolved, what does the future hold for this neighborhood, in the very core of the city? What motivates others not to fall into the same detrimental behaviors? And what attitudes or beliefs develop in those neighbors and childrens who must pass by this property each day? As I believe you'll agree, a community's perceptions and attitudes towards a neighborhood are not defined by the nicest homes, but by the least. Having lived in Oklahoma City my entire life, it is my belief such conditions in a neighborhood with a louder voice and more financial resources would be dealt with promptly and sufficiently. I would out ask the mayor and each council member, what would you do and what actions would you take, knowing how the city works, if these conditions developed in your neighborhood? We are merely asking you to do the same for ours. With that, I thank you for the opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Stay here, Tom. I'd like to get some legal advice. Cindy, do you have any advice for the council on how we could help the United Nations?
Mayor, I would really like to hear from Charles Locke to see what factually has been done.
Well, this is one of our ongoing problems. This is actually one of the problems we talked about when we had our meeting. We've issued citations upon citations on this property. We've cleaned it up. This is a person that's scrapping out of his home, and he collects all this stuff from big junk and brings it home. Problem is, we can't prove that it's a business because we can't prove any of the financial end of it. At this point, I talked to this gentleman yesterday, very nice man. We feel his pain. We, we are working it. I mean, but our limitations are that when, when we clean it up, it's no time until he's got it back like this. We've got liens on his properties, so we probably need a fresh approach on it, something, something else we can do.
Charles, I just heard about this this morning. Do we have any convictions yet on any of the citations?
Now, that I do not know.
Okay. Mayor, we can check on the status of the citations. What I would say is that if we can get a few convictions, as often happens with nuisance cases, it bolsters a civil nuisance action that the city may be able to bring on this. So definitely, I need to sit down with the attorneys who normally handle those types of actions and see what we have factually, whether we have any convictions. Won't do us any good probably to go over to district court on a civil action if we don't have some convictions on some of these criminal citations. So we'll definitely look into that and see where we can go next.
Is state law entering this situation at some point?
It sounds like what Charles Locke and his folks are doing, I started to say neighborhood, that's a far back week.
Cleaning up is part of that. That's part of the state statute.
Right. It allows for the cleanup, but if it's a continuing, you know, you clean it up and it just comes right back again, we may need to take a district court action.
And what would the basis of that court action be?
It would be a nuisance action. Yes.
Are there, Tom, are there safety considerations? I mean, are there children at the home or in the neighborhood that are exposed to anything or potential injury or?
Well, as, as you could probably note from the picture, sometimes it migrates out into the street. I will tell you just what the number of vehicles going down 42nd Street, it's sometimes very difficult to access. There's a little jog in the street, and I know at times I've had folks who've, who've left my house and commented that they have to turn around because they can't get through that area. And numerous issues have been submitted to the Action Center on that. And, you know, Engine Seventeen comes by our, our house quite frequently, and I'm not sure how they navigate that at times. But again, if you look, there's also, I believe, a city-owned drainage way to the east of it, and large dead trees. And I know there's a, a family that lives in the house to the, to the east, and, you know, have had, dealt with falling branches over the years. And then there are, I believe, children in the home.
So he, so he's purchased the house next to it, and now it's just, it's expanding over two yards?
Yeah, and I don't, if you look on the very bottom of the photos that I provided, right, that's primary.
This is the second house there. And then, do these houses have backyards?
Yes, sir.
And do we know what's happening in the backyard or?
Well, I, I can't say what's happening from the backyard. I can only see what's from the street. There is one large structure, I believe, in the, in the first residence that you can view from Altadena that I've, I've know has been submitted for, you know, issues regarding blighting and not maintaining it in accordance with, with city codes and standards. But I don't think action's been taken on that due to access issues.
Well, this is outrageous. I mean, put it minimally, but let us see what we can do, see if we can't come up with a different idea.
There is citations that can be given and attempted to be collected, and if they're not paid, then we can go into district court on a civil action. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I believe there are several citations that have been issued. I just don't know the status of them. I'll need to check on that.
Cindy, I would suggest this, not on this particular case, but if, if civil action did occur, certainly an opportunity for discovery would, would be allowed, and you might suggest, I might suggest you consider using Jim Williamson, our internal auditor, to determine whether or not a trader business is being conducted. He could certainly come to those conclusions with some access to documentation, and then it might expand into something well beyond just municipal ordinance if, who knows whether or not income's being properly reported and things like that. Thank you.
Tom, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. Esteemed, illustrious, how on earth? We have a friendly, friendly gestures I might attempt at this particular moment, but I'm kind of a little upset that I wasn't able to address the people who were doing their presentations prior to this gentleman leaving. Now, you may hear what I have to say. However, the person presenting it doesn't hear what the citizens are saying to what they have to say. Naturally, probably don't even watch the Channel 20 station after it's over with. So in other words, they get to say what they say, and they're gone. They don't get to hear from people like myself, so it seems to me that this is a bit out of whack that these people can't sit here and listen to me if I listen to them. I mean, that's part of transparency, I thought. Okay, you know, now, this Jimmy Stewart revitalization for the golf club, golf course. Now, we want to tear down Douglas Center. Are we going to make that Jimmy Stewart Center now? This is something I definitely want to ask a question to. Now, we also know too that you're not going to tear down Douglas Center suddenly and say, okay, well, now, we want to help you African-Americans out. It don't make much sense to me because... It don't make much sense to me, because it would have taken this long for that to happen, now would it? We know that. So then, now, what this is a part of then, now, we have the gentleman speaking. I came in a little bit late. I didn't get his name precisely, because it's not on the paperwork, but I definitely would be talking with him regarding the parks and recreation. Now, according to this gentleman, there have been various improvements made. These are my notes, by the way. Y'all watching up there? Nobody? Good. Y'all watch, you see that? These are my notes. Now, according to this gentleman here, you've got all kind of renovations going on with Will Rogers Gardens, which was closed temporarily due to summer events reopening. Then you have, like I said, various other programs and centers and recreation centers and things being redone. Okay, now, I'm very proud of what this gentleman is talking about, but not until recently, until, Mr. Shadid, you've got a couple of ideas for me, too. Not until Mr. Shadid started asking questions regarding the Jimmy Stewart golf course and things, and then suddenly Douglas Center opens up. Well, certainly, we're going to tear down Douglas Center. Now, let me say this, too. I'm sure that everybody knows that you cannot operate and function as a government in which this park and recreation is a part of without insurance. Now then, Douglas Center, for the most part, a couple of months ago, was broken into. Are you ready for this one? I haven't heard any person say yet, not even out of this man's mouth, are y'all ready now? I asked you to ask me if I'm wrong or right. Not one time did I hear this man say, we're going to use our insurance, since we definitely have, should have burglary insurance, we should have fire insurance, we should have certi insurance. I knew Michael Washington knows this being a paralegal. Okay, now, various items were taken out of this recreation center, stolen from a window, broken window on the side of the building, right on the side of it. Now, these kids don't have basically anything, the little black kids, again, we have little African-Americans, white, Hispanic, I'm not a race of any kind, I love all babies. As a matter of fact, everybody knows this, it's just so have we talking about the black American community right now, African-American kids visiting this center. Now, the reason much information and emphasis is not placed on it is because it's African-American in a blighted area of reality, community. Well, we need to start sending some of this money back over on this side. Like I said, we already know gentrification is coming, because you're not trying to tear down Douglas Center for me, or the people I live with. Okay? You already taken Deuce Street, you already taken Eleventh and Style, I used to see a kid run through, have fun in, that's gone, and you're moving more and further now, further back east, to now you're on Douglas Center. You wanted Douglas School at first, you had that guy, I'm not going to mention his name, who increased feloniously those children graduating or whatever, and kids and seniors. But anyhow, let me say this right here. Now, according to this park and recreation gentleman, 1,250 programs are available. Not one time did we hear this man say, everything this man has said has been on the northwest side. Everything. Okay, grounds management, Will Rogers Park South Shelter, those are being revitalized. We have $125,000 for that grant that they were given. Okay, then you're getting royalties from, oh, y'all know I'm going to love this one. Then you're getting royalties from oil and gas. Okay, airports are getting royalties from oil and gas, too. But now, where's all this money gone then, other than into the pockets of those people, wealthy developers? Come on now. And as a matter of fact, Mayor, the same money that you people are using today, employing developers to come on the northeast side, you're going to use property owners as alarm taxes levied against them, increasing their property taxes, without telling these people what's going on?
Okay, Michael, we've got to wrap you up.
Okay, but now, I got three different areas. That was just one, right?
I let you exceed your time, because I know there was a lot to talk about today. Come back next week, and you can talk again.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. But I'd also like to say, too, again, I think that we may have to have filed civil action here, because I have a right to speak on each topic, according to your own paperwork here.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a good day, gentlemen. And I will be back again. Have a great day, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me.
All right. Items from council. Happy birthday.
Since we're engaging in points of personal privilege, I want to thank my mom. 60 years ago today, she brought me into this world, and she watches this show every time we're on TV, so thanks, Mom.
All right. And it is councilman Stone's birthday this week. I'm not sure which day it is.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Congratulations to you, too. Anything else, Mark? You were going to talk earlier.
Yeah, just, I had received several calls, people complaining about I-235 being closed, what I call the broader extension. I just want to thank Allen Contracting for getting it open a day early.
Yeah, all right. John? All right. David? Todd? Larry?
I'd like to congratulate the folks in Musgrave-Pennington. They had a great neighborhood meeting. President Ryan Lurch was re-elected for another year, and he made an interesting comment as the discussion went on during the meeting. He said, "The passion that some of you residents are showing forebodes very well for the future of the neighborhood." Isn't that true? If neighbors get passionate about improving their neighborhood, things get done in a positive way. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed? All right. James? All right. City manager reports?
Nothing this morning.
All right. Word, Jerry.